All right. So, Mayna, go ahead and call us to order here. Madam City Clerk, would you do the roll call for us, please?
Mayor Christie Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran. Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie. Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Present.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
Councilmember Stewart, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of 5-0, the agenda passes. Next on our agenda, we have an executive session, and it is pursuant to potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1. Aye. On our schedule, it says an hour, so hopefully we'll be done sooner. We'll reconvene at that time. I don't think we expect any action, so... All right. Okay. So, we will now have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 p.m. the end of business day to our city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and are available to the public. We don't have a sign up. Is there anyone that would like to address the council?
Hi, my name's Mary Victor. I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. As most of you probably remember, I attended the council retreat this year in January, and I did speak twice there. I spoke on public comment about public comment. And one of the things I said is, it kind of doesn't really matter what we say at the mic, because if we don't get heard, it doesn't go anywhere. And we say, if we say helpful stuff, the only way it gets taken anywhere is if someone agrees with it, or writes it down, or makes an action on it. And I've also said exactly the same thing at the planning commission. And I know that people have felt frustrated that there isn't, like, there isn't an individual person who can have impact anymore, because things have not been running very smoothly. So I wanted to speak to that. I think one of the things I saw, because I attend a bunch of the council meetings, is one of the things we have to be very careful of in listening to input is that you don't listen to refute.
Can I say that again?
You should not listen to refute. If you're listening only so you can figure out what to say against the person, you're not really listening. And that's true as a management skill. That's true whether you're talking to a council member, or a city manager, or a staff member, or your kids, or your spouse. So it's really important when you listen to try to listen to hear what's being said. People want to know they've been heard. And then when they've been heard, you can consider what they say. And then if you want to come up with refuting, that's fine. Like, I know you guys like to ask clarifying questions, which I think is really good as council members. But even listening, when you guys are talking, and some of the clarifying questions, I've been confused as a listener, what's going on. So I wanted to talk about that a little bit. One of the things that runs things in this city is what city council decides. You guys can override a lot of things. You can set regulations and policy. And none of us can do anything individually, because you guys have to have at least a majority vote. And you guys have had a lot where it's 7-0, 6-1, 5-2. It shouldn't be 4-3 all the time, and I think you've been doing good at that. But in order to work together, you need to be a team. And that means you need to be able to hear and listen to what the other people are saying, and then take that. Each of you individually is very good, and you're very intelligent, and you're very able to do the job, but you need to work together to have it done. And I think one of the reasons there's so much frustration, I've seen a lot of staff changes in the three and a half years I've been speaking and listening, and I'm going to mention Glenn Akramoff, who's the acting city manager. I've spoken with him about this. I don't think we have a people problem. I think we have a process problem. So I used to work as a manager for a company that was GTE-NAT&amp;T, where we were research and development. We had management training every other Friday for two years. And we also used something called Edward Deming's Quality Circles, because Japan had been kind of wiped out in the war, and then all of a sudden Sony and Samsung and everything was doing really well. So Edward Deming had studied them and said, how did Japan, like, get ahead in the market and have all these really quality products? And so there's this thing called the feedback loop. So when you start something, the earlier that you get feedback in the loop, the better that you can do. Because if the feedback comes too late, it's really expensive, or you can't even fix it sometimes. If it comes, like, after product release, oh my god, then you have, I mean, it's really bad. So like, when we have topics that are going to go to planning commission, you need to have, like, Jessie Bond was really good for doing that. She'd get the council's pre-direction before they'd even do a topic. And then when it go to planning commission, if you get input, and you take public input then, I'm really tired of giving public input at the one public hearing now that we get at city council. And, you know, then you're kind of trying to derail stuff at the end, because you weren't heard at any other process before. The process is not working. It's not the people. And I know that Glenn knows about this, because I think he even knows the people from it. So maybe you want to use it. Maybe you want to use something else. I don't know who will be city manager. I presume that's part of this discussion tonight. But I just wanted to bring those up, because I think we all need to listen better and work better together for the city to run well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
John Galvin, 109-502 Southeast 16th Street, Smamish. I personally am free of the town center, but I feel an obligation, after 20 years of engaging in the city process, I feel like an obligation to stay involved. We're really at the precipice, and I can see this whole city falling down into a deep, deep, dark, chaotic hole. Staff have been alienated. We've seen senior management depart. Chamber of Commerce is alienated. Developers who have made huge investments in the effort to realize what the city plans for its town center, they've been alienated. I've seen two city council members usurping power that does not belong to them. They undermine decisions. They are uncooperative with fellow council members. They are not focused on implementing major plans that took years and years to develop and went through planning commission, went through councils, went through citizens' review. Things have grinded to a halt. I think Mary just gave you some very good advice. I'm just flabbergasted, totally frustrated, don't know what to say, because I think trying to deal with substantive issues seems not to be relevant anymore. So I hope you can get past this current concurrency fiasco and go on. There's so many things that need to be dealt with, you know? So that's my hope, and I think it may be resolved tonight, but it seems like we resolve it, and then a week later, somebody has made another proposal, another claim, and put another issue on the agenda. So I wonder who is establishing the agenda these days? But anyway, good luck.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Next, we have unfinished business. We have the contract for the interim city manager services through Proffman. Mr. City Manager.
Oops. Thank you, Mayor. This has been on the agenda a couple of times, and I believe the council is ready to act on an interim city manager service agreement with Proffman. With that, I'll hand it back to the mayor for discussion.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Valderrama.
I see what the rate wages for this... Trying to see what the other compensations have to be given to him for housing and other types of issues. I'm trying to find that on the sheet.
May I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
At the end of the contract, I'm trying to pull it up, we have, that says that that is an issue between the city and Larry, the interim city manager directly. We've prepared a short, one-page contract that has Aaron Anton's blessing, and it'd be up to $4,000 a month for... And Lita has copies of that. And we would actually ask the council to, if you've approved the Proffman contract, then also approve this one page.
Do we need separate motions for that, Mike?
Please, just so we're clear. That's an up to $4,000 per month for housing and travel, so...
Ramiro, did you have anything else, or you finished? Councilmember Valderrama, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so it says that it would be a weekly rate of $4,600 for each week worked, with no cap on hours. Is there a minimum number of hours? Is it a fixed, so it's $4,600 a week, no matter if he works one hour or 80? Is that...
Theoretically, yes, but he will be working many hours.
And then do we have any idea of what the client required licenses, fees, and taxes are going to be? Does anyone know what that's going to look like?
Proffman company, like, any would have to get a business license and pay any city assesses, but they're pretty minimal, so...
Thanks.
Ramiro, do you have something else? Your light's on. Do you have something else? Your button's on. Do you still, oh, no, okay. Okay, if there aren't any more questions, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the agreement with Proffman.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Discussion?
I just asked for discussion. No one, no one pressed the button.
Oh, I'm just putting my light on.
Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
Okay. You know, I like the candidate, I like what's been discussed. My problem is that we've just changed into an acting city manager, and then as I'm doing the quick calculation, this is going to be costing us $24,000-plus per month for three months, where we're only going to be doing the budget and looking for the permanent city manager. And I'm trying to figure out, bringing someone in who's not from in-state, who doesn't know the staff, who has to work on the budget, and paying that money, is that really the best use of money at this time? And what are we not getting currently that we need to go to this process? I haven't gotten those answers right now, what we're going to be, what's the marginal benefit for this, or taxpayers for that? And so that's my concern.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, the numbers add up to approximately less than or at about the existing, the previous city manager. Because the cost doesn't, they pay for employee benefits, insurance, and all the fringe-type costs. So with that said, we're getting effectively a same rate from a compensation standpoint, city manager. Why go outside and not have someone familiarity? I think it's a great opportunity to have someone from the outside, take a fresh look, have staff exchanging, have fresh ideas, and work through that without having the same culture as is going forward. I think it's good to always get a fresh perspective. That's why the outside is a benefit to us. And as we search for the permanent city manager, we'll be able to look at the criterias, reach out to the public, what's important for the new hire. It may be local, it may be somebody outside of the area, but we've got to make a careful assessment. We just can't necessarily keep looking at internally right now, because I think we all need to pull back and look at it, and I think it's a great opportunity.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I oppose the Proffman contract and the hiring of a contract city manager. I think our acting city manager is doing a sufficient job. Matter of fact, I think he's doing a great job. I see no reason to spend additional resources, additional time, again, nothing against the candidate that we've discussed from the, from Proffman. But to my end of things, this is not a good use of taxpayer resources. We're not fixing roads. We're not helping the environment. We're dealing with personalities here, on a very, very short-term basis, we hope. I'm very concerned about staff, their perception about what we're doing. I'm concerned that we're bringing in new people, changing gears, letting people go, moving people around on a whim. And we have people that have worked here for a long time, and are committed to this, to the city, to their roles in the city. And I think it's unfortunate that we, as a council, have not taken their position, their livelihood, their opinion, into account when making these decisions. We need to be working closer with staff, not making unnecessary... We're adding stress to their lives unnecessarily so. And I don't think that's needed. I think we can do better, looking forward. We're going to find a new full-time person. That's going to cost a lot of money. That's an executive search firm cost. I see no reason to move forward on this right now, so I'll be opposing this motion.
Tom, did you have anything just before I call for the vote? Just since you don't have a button.
No. Nope.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of 4-3, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, could we then get a motion on, to approve the interim city manager agreement regarding expenses in an amount not to exceed $4,000 per month as well?
Yes, I would entertain a motion on that.
Second. Second.
Okay. Now it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. More to Councilmember Ross's point. Does this additional $4,000, or up to $4,000, include your conversation or your point about whether or not the Proffman contract is at the same level, or commensurate with the math you did for our previous city manager?
Yes.
So this includes that? Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of 4-3, it passes. Our next item, discussion on concurrency and the GMA. I'm going to turn that over to our city manager.
I think the city attorney would like to make a comment on this, so I will hand it off to him.
I would. Thank you, Mayor, and Glenn. I think, counsel, that there's been some confusion among council members and in the community about the requirements under the Growth Management Act to meet concurrency. And so I'm going to try to do this as quickly and plainly as I can, but certainly feel free to jump in. The analysis starts with the Department of Commerce, the state agency that runs, regulates GMA, with their guidance that says, the GMA does not mandate any particular level of service, or any particular way of measuring level of service. And that's a tribute to council members. They give you broad discretion to determine how to establish your LOS standards. In making that determination, you do have to comply with some of the black-and-white terms of the Growth Management Act. And here's where I'm going to try to make this as clear as possible. The Growth Management Act does require the city, whatever means you choose to assess concurrency level of service, you must include all arterials in the city, no exceptions. The confusion perhaps arose from the July meetings, and that the council was considering an LOS approach that dealt with intersections only. But that approach did, in fact, include the intersections on the arterials. The discussion then continued, and so let me be clear on that. In my view, that intersection-only analysis, because it includes all the arterials, does comply with the GMA. It meets the floor. But the council then certainly has the discretion to add more to that, to enhance your analysis, and add some arterial segment or other analyses. And that's what I understood you to be doing on the 17th. So, bottom line, you have wide discretion in picking the approach to set your LOS standards. In doing so, you have to meet the black-and-white terms of the GMA, and that includes analyzing every arterial.
Very good. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Valderrama.
Yes, Mike, as you know, during, I guess maybe it was the last council meeting, or the previous one, I had posted some of the material from MRSC, of which they had stated, "GMA regulations even more explicitly prohibit use of concurrency to prevent growth." The WAC 365-196-843C provides, "Counties and cities should set levels of service realistically to reflect realistic expectations and consistent with the achievement of growth aims. Setting levels of service too high could, under some regulatory strategies, result in no growth. As a deliberate policy, this would be contrary to the Act." I want to know if you agree with that, and what force and effect this could have.
Well, I agree with it, not because MRSC said it, but because they are quoting verbatim the provisions of the Washington Administrative Code. And the Washington Administrative Code has essentially the same force and effect as a statute.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, seeing none, I think we'll move on.
I'm sorry, Christie, yeah, I'm sorry, Christie, I got a question. So I want to just make clear for everybody, including the public, that, so what I think, Mike, you just said is, and it's very different from what I thought the motion was, and it was agreed last meeting, but we are going down the path now that the, nothing, no arterials will be exempt, but not all arterials will be subject to a volume segment analysis, if we so decide to add that to anything. But it doesn't have to be to all the arterials. Correct?
Correct, with the predicate there being that the council adopts the intersection-only analysis that was before it, because that is what satisfies the GMA requirement to include all the arterials, yeah.
Or some methodology.
Right, correct, Tom, yeah.
Yeah, okay, fair enough, all right. Okay, second question. I wanted to highlight what Councilmember Valderrama just said, as to quoting the WAC. There's a very specific word in there about deliberately setting an LOS too high that would frustrate growth. And I think people have a tendency to ignore that word deliberately. So I think if you're trying to be reasonable and settle an LOS that makes sense for your community, you should have support.
I couldn't understand what he, the last thing he said after.
Support from what or who?
From the law.
Yeah, that'll be the heart of the council's policy decision in setting the LOS. I mean, I agree with you, Tom, that the word deliberate, that is, as a deliberate policy, is in there deliberately. I mean, it means something. It does.
Did you deliberately use that word?
The rules of statutory construction say that you have to give meaning to all the words used. So if the legislature didn't mean as a deliberate policy, it would have just said as a policy. In this case, not the legislature, but the Department of Commerce. It's a WAC provision. So that does create some additional, some room, that latitude, that discretion we talked about, that the council has in setting your LOS standards. You know, that is further, you are further guided in that by some of the cases, the Growth Board and appellate cases we've talked about, where LOSF in at least one was essentially approved. I mean, that's a little too strong a term. What happened in the MUD case was the challenger said, "Setting LOSF is a violation of GMA." And while the board did not come right out and say, "No, it isn't," it did uphold the LOSF standard there, by looking at the various criteria that the county council in that case had built into its LOS standards. Long and confusing way of saying you've got a fair amount of discretion, council, and a fair amount of deliberation still to do on this.
I don't see any more lights on, so we will move to new business. We have a discussion on the acting city manager employment. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On July 17th, you had started the process of an interim city manager, and needed a little more time, so you named an acting city manager. And there weren't a lot of, there wasn't time for discussion on compensation, that sort of thing. So that's what the discussion is tonight, is what the council pleasure is with that. Thank you.
Very good. We'll open it up to council for any questions or discussion.
I'd like to move to adopt this agenda bill.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Ross.
For acting roles, from my experience, it's usually compensated through non-monetary compensation, such as recognition, employee development, and another credential for future promotions and employment. With that said, this is unusual circumstance. We have, Glenn Hu has stepped up, and I also like to add, he's done a great job, gone well over what would be expected in communicating to us, has sat down with us one-on-ones, all of which I greatly appreciate, and he's been quite the listener and quite the professional. So from that perspective, because of unusual circumstance, if this is the only thank-you card I can give him, then so be it. That's what I'll give him.
You look like you're about to push a button.
I'm thinking.
Okay, well, think faster, I'm going to call for the vote. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to push the button.
Okay, Councilmember Valderrama.
So I guess we've gone through a cycle that's confusing to our citizens, and I had to say the least as to what's been happening here. I even heard that this evening, as people were filing in. And so now we have the acting city manager, and again, somehow, this fell through the cracks, that nobody talked to the acting city manager, and expected whoever the acting city manager was to step up and do this stuff that, as Councilmember Ross mentioned, has done a fabulous job. So I think part of this is a discussion of now, in hindsight, and we've got latitude to either reduce that percentage point, or deny it, or accept it. It's not a take-all. But again, the ball was dropped in doing this, and I think the problem lies here in the council as well, that we did not address this issue. So I'm putting it out there to say that we've got to look at ourselves as well, and what would the rational person expectation be? Is it 5%? Is it 3%? Is it none? Is it all 5? I don't know, but this is one of the things that we've created by, again, in all of this rushing and flip-flopping back and forth.
Councilmember Ross.
Well, I did the math, and if it's one and a half months, it's about $1,200. So I'd rather not kill a chicken with a missile on this and move on.
It's $1,200?
Yeah.
The number we're talking about?
That's not what this says.
The number's higher on the first line, but maybe that's for the six months.
That's the full year calculation.
5%.
Yes, so one and a half months, times that, out of 12, comes up to about $1,223.
Okay, so this is... Okay, so this is just $1,200 something we're talking about?
Yep, that's all we're talking about.
Okay, seeing no more lights up here. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, by a vote of 7-0, it passes. Okay, next we have, under council reports, we have the city manager who is seeking our direction on a request for proposal process for the permanent city manager. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, as you all know, that's something that's high on your priority list right now, and the sooner you put together an RFP and get a draft in front of you, the better. So it makes sense for us to get started as soon as possible. So we'd like to get that direction for you tonight, so that we can start tomorrow.
Councilmember Valdroma.
So Glenn, can we go to neighboring cities who have gone out for city manager? I know that Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of Issaquah, recently went out for their city administration. I assume AWC also has some terms. So can we do a collection of those to try to pick out the best practices that are there?
Yes, should you give me the permission tonight, I'll have the, our HR team actually start that process. And there have been a number of them that have gone on over the last year or two, and so we'll collect a bunch of them and give you an opportunity to pick the best, and she'll also make, our HR team will also make a base recommendation to help out.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I think it's important that the members of the city council, given the transitions we keep having at the city manager role, that members of the council be part of that conversation from beginning to end. No surprises. So I think, is there a motion on the floor that I can amend, or is this just a?
There is.
Okay, then I'd like to offer an amendment that--
I'm sorry, what's the motion? I didn't hear a motion. We didn't have a motion, I thought we did. No.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we adopt, or we direct city staff and the city manager to begin a process, to begin to look for, to build an RFP, to search for a permanent city manager for some AMISH, but that we include up to three city council members on that, part of those discussions going forward. Email, meetings, HR team meetings, whatever it is, so that we have input and awareness as to what's going on.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so I'll open it for discussion. Okay, I don't see any lights, so I want to say something.
Hi, Christie.
Oh.
I've got a comment, too.
Go ahead, Tom, and then I'll go.
I guess I need to better understand what the process is. I think right now, we're just trying to say, should we give the head nod to go ahead? But now the motion is to have three of us participate in that. I think it'd be better to get, have the city manager prepare and outline, we can talk about this later, if this, whether this passes or fails, but I think it's staff duty and the way we typically run an RFP, is we have input as a full council, not just three members. Input of the full council with city manager coming back to say, "Here's what we're thinking. What do you think, council?" And then we have our input as seven of us, or as a body, and then they go back out and change it. So I'm not for having another three-member council be involved with this. I think it's not a good use of time.
So what I was going to say is, my hope was that we would not be doing an RFP specifically for a permanent city manager, but doing an RFP for the search firm that would be doing this. And this is something that our acting city manager and I had had a discussion about specifically. So, and I recently spoke with a Bellevue city council member, and they had gone through this process of finding a city manager within the last couple of years. And something they did was, they put out an RFP for the company that would be doing the search. And in consideration of past history, I would think that might be wise on our part, to find a good company first, and then do this, the permanent city manager. So I will not be supporting the motion on the floor. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so what I'd like to see us do is move really quickly. So we, as a council, acted in removing our city manager. We elected or voted in an acting city manager that wasn't even in town and didn't really notify him or negotiate salary. Now we're bringing in another one who will be paying quite a bit more to. Will be paying more, will be paying about $1,400 a week more, plus the $4,000 in expenses, more than our current acting city manager. So I'd like to see us, whatever we do, that we do it quickly. I'm not saying we don't all need to have input, but we need to get on this, folks. You know, our next meeting isn't until September 4th, so we need to get something on paper, get it out there, and get moving, or we're going to be paying for this interim city manager for a year. I think three months is wishful thinking. I think six to nine months is more realistic, and I think it could easily go beyond a year, given the current job market. So we don't have a lot of time to waste, so I think that we need to, we need to, whatever input the staff needs between now and September 4th, I think a three-person committee makes sense, so that we can do stuff without the full council, so that on September 4th, we can come with an RFP that we can vote on, pass it, and move on, because we have a lot of work to do, and we need to move quickly.
Councilmember Ross.
Okay, so you like to reach back and beat us up from prior votes. What, I really do agree with Christie, that we should just be doing an RFP for the search firm itself, period. Once we've established and selected that search firm, then we will establish the process. That doesn't have to be before September 4th, that is after we've assigned and identified and contracted with the search firm.
Councilmember Ritchie.
In an attempt to keep the snark to a minimum, I think it's important that we recognize that search firms, having dealt with them many times in several different roles, admittedly not finding a city manager, they are expensive, they are extremely hands-on, or they give you things you do not want. There is a lot of back and forth. I do not think it's appropriate for us to only look at search firms. I think that that is putting our head in the sand. I think that that is inappropriate to just limit ourselves there. So I would hope that we can work, my purpose in this motion is to try to make sure we're working with the city manager, the acting city manager, the staff, HR, to try to provide some input. I don't care who the three people are, it can rotate. It doesn't matter. What I'm asking is that we need to have our input. We impose this on the staff. We impose this action on our city. It is up to us, the seven of us, to help make sure that the transition is smooth. The transition including whether or not we pursue a search firm. What is in the RFP? What is our budget? Where are we looking? These are all things that a search firm is going to need to know. Are we going to look, it's very regional, has been my experience when you're dealing with search firms. A nationwide search, you're going to pay through the nose, and you may or may not find what you're looking for. That's been my experience, and I don't, I'm not insisting I'm on it. By no means do I need to feel like I'm on it. I think we all need to have a voice, and more to Councilmember Stewart's point, we have a very short period of time, the clock is ticking, the dollars are falling out of our taxpayers' pockets because of our actions. And if we don't get this going now, we're going to be looking at things three, six months down the road and slowing this decision down because we don't have time? I have time to save my taxpayers' money. That's what I'm here to do. So I think it's important that we continue to maintain a hands-on, help with staff, working hand in glove, to get this done the right way, so that when we do present things, whether it's on September 4th, or the following meeting, or whenever it is, that we have a more fully baked product that we can present.
So I want to just make a few comments, just to clarify what I had originally stated. First of all, I understand we have a very short amount of time, which is why I asked this to be on this agenda on a special meeting, because I recognize the value of our time, and that if we waited for another few weeks until we got to September 4th, that was just time that was lost. So that's why I suggested that we talk about this. I'm also not suggesting that we're not involved in that process, but I really want to see us look for a search firm, rather than just simply going to what we know, which may or may not prove to net us quality candidates that we seek. I would also hope that that process would involve the full council, that it would involve staff's input, as well as our residents. There are opportunities for our, the greater public to be involved in that process for hiring, if the council so desires, but I'm just suggesting that we get the process moving. But I think finding the right search firm is key to producing the right candidate for us. So I just wanted to clarify what I meant. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so Councilmember Ritchie, would you entertain a friendly amendment to say that we have a up-to-three-person committee working with the acting city manager and other staff members to develop the RFP that can include, potentially include, a search firm, as well as outside the search firm criteria, so that what's presented on September 4th is more fully baked? No one, I think, is ever suggesting that we make a decision without the full council's input, but that over the next couple of weeks, we could certainly make more progress than waiting to bring a first iteration back to the full council and then iterate from there. We do, as a seven-person body, have a lot of opinions, which is great, if we can channel them to bring them together quickly. So I think, would you entertain that amendment?
The answer is yes, but I'm not quite sure what the amendment is. It sounds great. It's a lot there, right?
That's right. So I think your motion was that we work with the city manager and staff to put together an RFP for searching for the permanent city manager, and I think Mayor Malchow recommended a search firm, so I guess I'm saying, let's kind of blend those two things together, that we can work, have a three-person committee work with the city manager and the HR staff to put together an RFP that may include both options, or may come up with different options, so that on September 4th, we have some well-baked, or partially baked, options that have quite a bit of input already, so that we can make a decision on September 4th. Was that more clear?
Sort of.
Oh, darn it.
I accept the friendly amendment, if I, can I?
Oh, please.
Can I speak to it?
Yes, please.
That is much more, that's much more what I'm talking about. What I don't want to do is be in a situation where we're caught by surprise and we're delayed. That's all. I mean, I don't, no one's making any decisions before the full council sees it.
Correct.
I think we learned our lesson there, right? I mean, I think what we're trying to do here is trying to figure out, how do we get more input at an earlier stage, whether it's, okay, this RFP is going to be just for search firms, because they have these criteria. This RFP is going to be for a public notice. This is going to be for something we put in AWC. There are three or four or five different iterations, oh my God, there's the word again, right, that we could do here, and I just hope that we can work with staff and try to help where we can. Now, just, maybe it's oversight, maybe it's direction, no, it's more just making sure we're working with them, giving our input, so that they know what we're thinking. And again, I'm perfectly comfortable with it being flexible. We can move people in and out, but, you know, obviously, we want to try to be cognizant of OPMA, you know, restrictions, but I just, I accept your friendly amendment. That makes perfect sense to me.
I'd like to ask a quick question, if I may, because I'm trying to understand how we are going to do a singular RFP when we're looking for both a search firm and a city manager, because the search firm would be looking for the city manager. So I'm trying to unpack that one in my head.
Okay, so I think, I think that's where the input would actually help us the most in what has been proposed, is that getting to giving, giving the council as a whole some background on both directions, so that we can get the clear direction to move forward. I think you do have to decide one or the other in general. I do, I do think that my experience on the hiring side, you know, having been hired and gone through the process with it, with search firms, you have to take into account that they can help you get the right candidate. That's what they do. I have had poor experiences with them also, on the candidate side and as a hiring, but I do think that's an important thing to consider. But I think this, this couple-week period, we could get direction on the fourth. And with the council input, I think the point of not surprising you where staff will go and just, you know, kind of do this based on their experience without council input will, could delay you, and I think that is a valid concern. And so to be able to do both and have that discussion and set those criteria, so that council can come back on the fourth and say, "We like these things, and we like this direction, and we can move forward." I think that would be a good process for us as staff.
So Councilmember Hornish has a question.
Yeah, and I appreciate, Glenn, what you just said, and I also appreciate that we do want and desire to move quickly, but I caution to move in haste, because this is a big decision for the city. I'm still not supportive of the motion, only because I think it's too administrative for three members to get involved. And more importantly, we as a council, we as a body, do not then see all of the options, because it's only brought back a few of the options that those three decided, and three do not decide. We've learned that in the past with committees. Three does not, they can't come back with one choice and say, "This is the council's recommendation," because it's a de facto decision. For that reason, I think it's still better to go back and forth, and may take a little bit longer. I don't think it'll take that much longer. But I think it's a better process to have the full council involved with that process moving forward.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, aren't we working parallel paths? Thank you. Parallel paths, having the search firm find its candidates, at the same time, there may be some candidates outside of the search firm. And then you've got a request for purchase for the contract for the ultimate final candidate. Did I capture that correctly?
I'm not sure.
I'm getting confused with, why are we having a committee trying to work where we're simply trying to engage, decide on what the right search firm for the simple task of finding a city manager? And I don't know why it's, takes a lot more involvement. And then, when we do get that search firm, I want their recommendations unfiltered to the council. I don't want any down-select from what the search firm recommends. So how does it get more complicated than that?
Well, I think, kind of to step back and describe, kind of how the process goes, I think it's important to know, when you're setting an RFP, to get what the council wants in a firm. There needs to be some input. Now, to Tom's point, we could, we can collect some, we can collect a bunch of examples, give you some, the way that looks, and bring that back to you in some form or fashion as well. But I think when you go into the process, the search firm does, if you go in that direction, the search firm does do a lot of that work. A lot of them have their own process, which in the RFP, they'll explain, but the council also, they all are very, very open to what the council wants in their process. So they'll have a menu, all of them have a menu for you to consider. And then that's where, and I think you're absolutely correct, that that's where the council really dives in. It becomes the council's process, and they work directly with, with the search firm representative. And staff and your HR team become really the coordinators of the schedules and that sort of thing. That's generally how it works. And I also agree with everyone, and I think this is, this is where it is a struggle, is that this city hasn't gone through a formal process like this in its past. It's a very important process, I think you all take it seriously, and I commend you for that, because that's, it is, it's one of the most important decisions you'll make over the next five years for your future, your city. So while I can see both points, not using a search firm or using one, I think that they become a really good support. That's why it's important to get the right one, the search firm, first. And your input is important.
Okay, thank you, that helps. I think it's, I almost think we can brainstorm, for example, I can name off a few immediately. I want someone who's going to have an environment and culture of collaboration, enhance employee morale, someone who has an open-door policy. I want someone who's got experience in transportation, managing a maturing city. I want someone who has dealt with infrastructure deficits and how to deal with it, short run and long run, shifting from a annexation, 1999, to a maturing city. Those types of transitions are important. So those are the types of things we would look for, for a search firm to engage. That's what they would be looking for. But as far as the search firm itself, we want someone who has successfully placed those types of candidates.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Ross hit the nail on the head, and I think he would be a great advocate for the council to be able to speak to, or speak on behalf of, or work with staff to make sure those qualities are passed on to building an RFP, so that the search firms send us qualified candidates that meet those shared goals. I agree with you 100%. I think a lot-- I think a lot of what we've gotten in trouble with, at least in my first eight months on this council, has been a lack of communication between staff and council. And in as much as we can do our job as council to try to convey, be open, be available, be present, to try to convey those thoughts and feelings and ideas to staff in ones and twos, not more than three, I think that is important, and it's a good step forward. Maybe it's administrative, maybe it's not necessary in every situation. We are changing city managers again, again, so I, for the second time in a month. So I think it's incredibly important that we make sure we are keeping our hands on the steering wheel as much as possible, given those changes. And I think the attributes that councilmember Ross laid out there, I agree with 100%. How do we make sure that those are getting into an RFP other than our involvement? Not overreaching involvement, not heavy-handed involvement, but awareness, participation, being able to ask and answer questions. We're not building the RFP as a council member, councilmembers, we are helping to participate in the process. It's our choice. Let's make sure we are giving the people that are building the RFP our best characterization of who we're looking for. That's the purpose of this motion.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I appreciate all that's been said, but I still don't get a sense that we're solidly know if we're going to go with the search firm or on the individual, that we're still grappling with that. Given the importance of this discussion and decision, I'm wondering if it behooves us to withdraw the motion and come back September 4th after further discussions and deliberations, even with the new interim city managers, and so find out what research can be brought to our attention.
Maybe, maybe councilmember Ritchie could repeat the motion?
It's been amended, so councilmember Stewart may have to...
It has changed quite a bit, so.
Yes.
What I have is to direct the city manager to begin the request for proposal process to search for a firm to hire a permanent city manager, and include up to five city council members in the process.
Three.
Three.
Oh, sorry, three. Sorry, three.
So you read "search firm," but not, and that wasn't my understanding. Is what she read correct?
Can you read it again, please? Because I didn't hear it.
She said to "search for," "search firm."
To "search for." Did you say "search firm" or "search firm"?
I thought I heard...
But "search for."
Okay, so you said "search firm." Okay, so, but it's "search for," a city manager, okay.
To "search for" a city manager. Yeah.
Okay.
That's the motion. And then, does that include your amendment?
Yes, doesn't it, or no?
No, I think, I think because your point of potentially wanting a search firm, I think, and whether we include this in this amendment, or this motion, or we kill this one and have a new one, but I think, I think we all agree, we need to move quickly, what is it, be quick but don't hurry, because we don't want to make any mistakes, but we need on September 4th to have some well-vetted options. And to councilmember Hornish's point, no one is suggesting that anyone come back with a singular option necessarily, but that we come back with well-vetted options. I, you know, if I'm not on that committee, I don't want to see 800 options on September 4th, I'd like to see three or four well-vetted options that we can then choose from, so that, again, we can be thorough, we have choices, we can all have our input heard, and we can pick something good. But we must be quick in doing this. So councilmember Valderrama, I don't, I don't know that we should wait another couple of weeks to kind of get started. I think it would be good if we figured out a way to move forward now, right? So that on September 4th, we can get whatever remaining input is needed and make a decision on the 4th for whatever RFPs we're going to be putting out. So I think the idea was that the motion would be that we get a group of people together to come up with options, searching for either a city manager directly and/or a search firm, and we come back with what those options would look like on the 4th.
I think...
Hold on, I've got, I think you still had your button on, did you not? Okay, okay, councilmember Ritchie.
I think that is encapsulated in the word "for."
Okay.
Okay, that, that works.
Councilmember Ross.
But it does put, put us behind on getting, engaging or getting candidates for a search firm, so it almost sounds like we do two motions, or two RFPs. One from the one that the motion that Jason shared, and the other is simply an RFP for a search firm. So when we figure out what type of options we do, including a search firm, we already have started the process to get that search firm option. Search firms are not going to charge you anything until they place you, so that's free. So I would suggest we maybe break it into two RFPs.
Actually, yeah, I think the, the motion was that we get together and we come back with multiple RFP options. That's the idea, what, for search firms and directly searching for a city council, or a city manager. It was to do both, all those options.
Can I ask, just real quickly, for our acting city manager, is it typical, and I know the City of Sammamish hasn't done this process before, but is it normal to search for a search firm and then also search for a city manager on your own without, I mean, doing both of them tandem, or you kind of pick one path or the other?
No, you, it's, it's typical that you pick one path, path or the other, for sure. You don't want, yeah, you don't want to be doing both, because it'll confuse candidates.
Okay. Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes, I'm not proposing that we do both. I'm proposing that we look at both and see what options there are with councilmembers' input, not more than three, and that we come back with options that may or may not include a firm, a search firm, or not, on the 4th. And by expediting, hurrying without rushing, rushing without breaking, whatever, you know, that we provide councilmember input to staff in this, you know, this two-week-plus period, not even two weeks, what, 10 days, whatever it is, you know, this 10-day period between now and our next meeting, that we try to create some, you know, lubricate the machinery of city government a little bit, providing some input, that's all. There's no decisions that are going to get made between now and then, it's just trying to help participate and trying to, you know, carry our, our share of the weight as a council. That's all I'm proposing, that we are part of the process, so that when the staff presents its options, there have been some councilmember input by direction.
Okay, I don't have any more lights on. So I think we're voting on, I'm not even sure, the, to search for a city manager process with three council members, something along those lines, is that, capture it? If everyone else wants to hear it, otherwise, I think we can just call for the vote.
That's not, I mean, the motion is what she read, and it's very specific, and it's, it's, okay.
Four.
Okay, to direct the city manager to begin a request for proposal process to search at, to hire a permanent city manager and include up to three council members in the process.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so I think by a vote of four, three, it passes. Okay, I think our, do we have a city manager report?
I think we need a motion to get three people to work with the city manager based on the last motion. So I move that we select three councilmembers to work with the city manager to fulfill our prior motion.
Second.
Okay, I'll take, okay, it's been moved and seconded. I think we need to take names of those who would desire to sit on that ad hoc committee, if you will. Councilmember Ritchie.
I'd like to nominate councilmember Ross, despite his no vote. I think he's incredibly insightful, important history and insight, and frankly, the fact that you voted no means I do want you on there, from a fellow councilmember, if you'll serve.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's three, we need two more.
I'll do it, if, if no one else wants to, I'm happy to help.
Okay, we've got councilmember Stewart. We have one more.
Sure.
Okay, okay, and we've got deputy mayor Moran. Okay, so councilmember Ross, councilmember Stewart, deputy mayor Moran.
Excellent. Do we need to vote on that, or are we good?
I think we're probably, do we need to vote on that, or we're good?
I don't think so.
Okay, very good.
Excellent.
Okay, I assume we have no reports, no executive session, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I have one, oh, sorry, one thing that I just like to put out there, I just, I'd like to thank Glenn formally.
Here, here.
For being so willing and agile and stepping up, and not only being agile, but from all of the feedback that I've heard from staff, that you've done a great job of stepping in, getting things organized, keeping things moving, and helping, helping people through this transitional period. So I really want to take the opportunity and, and thank you for your service to this community, your willingness to step into something that was obviously very ugly, and, and you've just handled it with the utmost professionalism, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so now we had a motion to adjourn, but not a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven, zero, we are adjourned.